Close training.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started tonight with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Go ahead with number one, approve the agenda, make additions, deletions, and corrections for this time.
And I have two additions. Under Mayor's report, number one will be the closed session recap.
Okay.
And then Engineer's Report, number four, to talk about parking during the street reconstruction process.
Do you have anything?
No.
Question?
I'm just gonna add number two on the Mayor's report, the ICSC conference. I sent an email or had Teresa forward an email there, so I'll just review that.
Do you entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll take the motion.
Well, seconded. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Number two, the consent agenda, using your packet, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Both of you.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Visitors to the council, Trevor Stump.
Thanks for letting me come and talk tonight. I am here just to give a little bit of a festival update. First off, I just wanna say some thank yous, first off, to the city of Casson, as always, letting us put this on, giving us the support and the time and space to be able to do this. I wanna thank our sponsors, just because without them, the festival would not be what it is. And then the volunteers, because I know it's said and it's reiterated every year, but that moment that parade's done and the festival was done last year, everybody was thinking forward to this year. There were new ideas coming up this winter and things like that. Really what I wanna talk to you about tonight is just kinda the big events and changes from last year that we have is entertainment for this year. We're actually gonna do, we've got two bands and we're gonna kinda make an evening of it. The first band is gonna be No Tent. It's a bluegrass slash, they call themselves New Grass, band out of the cities. They're younger, it's kinda upbeat. And then, actually after they play, we're gonna change something up. In the Casson Ambassador Program, we're gonna have right on the stage. So, we felt that people were moving from the belly flop contest to the gazebo to watch, to the stage to watch the concert. And if we could make it in one central location, people don't have to move, we can have less downtime in the park. And then after the Casson Ambassador Program, a band out of northern Minnesota, Monroe Crossing, is a bluegrass group who have a pretty good following throughout Minnesota and the Midwest. They're gonna play about fifty minutes, and then the Casson Ambassador judges are going to deliberate during that time, because in the past, during that Casson Ambassador Program, when they go and deliberate, that's about twenty minutes, where somebody kinda either talks awkwardly up on the, up in the gazebo trying to fill some time, and they have to step away anyways, so we felt that would be good. So then Monroe Crossing will take a break. The winners of the Casson Ambassador Program will be announced. They'll get their sashes, and then Monroe Crossing will come back and play another fifty minutes, which will hit us right up until the fireworks. And the fireworks, hopefully, will be able to happen with nice weather. And then, everything up at the park will be done for the night. Just another note about the Casson Ambassador Program. We are still looking for a volunteer who's going, who would like to help and run that. And we've sent out, we've put things on Facebook and things like that, and we're hoping that we can get some volunteers together to do that. Belly flop contest, we moved up to four thirty, because last, we don't have anything big going on in the afternoon of the park. Like last year, we had the tug of war going, and sometimes we have some other big things. But we figured, with the schedule that we have, we didn't wanna lull, so if we can start that a little earlier, we can start the concert a little earlier and kinda not be so rushed. And then, the big thing that we really wanna push on Saturday is the obstacle course again. Last year, they did it on the Friday, and it worked, but it was rainy, it was muddy, and then it ended up being moved back. But Bruce, who's working on it, he's trying to make it easier for the kids a little bit, so that they, a lot of them only make it through the first or second obstacle. He's trying to make a more kid-friendly course, and then keep the adult course, so that the kids can do it a little bit more. And he's working with Rue Yori again, out of Rochester, who was on last year's season of American Ninja Warrior. And he actually was called, asked to come back this year and is already competing again this year in American Ninja Warrior. And I just heard, and I don't know if Bruce knows yet, but there's a gal out of Rochester, too, who has been asked to compete on this season, this year's season of American Ninja Warrior. So I think, if we could get both of them involved, that would be great to have the kids come out, see them, and they help with it, and do the obstacle course themselves. And then, a big question that the committee's kinda been racking our brains on, was, is the parade route? With the construction that's going to be happening in northwest this year, we thought about it and tried to plan a route in northwest so that we could stay by the park, but we couldn't find anything, a parade route, that wouldn't interfere with the construction going on. So we've made the decision to move that, move the parade to northeast. We don't have a parade route solidified. We have a rough draft of one, hopefully, lineup up by the, between the middle school and the elementary school. Maybe be able to use the parking lots. We'd like to talk to Mr. Matuska about using the parking lots as kind of a staging area, so that we don't have parents dropping kids off in the middle of the road. Some of those types of floats that can be, it's a little safer to do that. And then, we do, the committee, somebody we're going to be sitting down with, Police Chief Burgess, to make sure that, once we finalize the parade route, is it okay if we close these roads down for that duration of the parade, from up the noon to three o'clock area? But, that's just kinda the big changes that we have. I do have some schedules printed off, if anybody would like to see tentative schedules for the weekend of the festival, but that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Trevor. Okay, no other visitors. Public forum, were there any cards, Teresa?
I did not receive.
Okay. Public hearing, no committee report, we're on that F, full business, number one, South Fork Assessment Extension Request.
So, this had come to the council previously, and I think the indication or question was, was there any way to tie this in with the need for some infrastructure improvement that needed to take place in South Fork? And I'll turn it over to Attorney Lott, and I think she's taken a look at what the two different agreements are, and how maybe to navigate the two different things.
So, in the packet was the letter that I had sent with regard to the actual ownership of the streets and the infrastructure there. Because it is, those streets and the infrastructure are privately owned, I think that we should treat the request for an extension of the deferrals of the assessments separate from any request to have them make any improvements to those private streets. So I, and I, Doug, I know that you had asked, you know, is there any way that we can, we can kind of relate those two? I think that our best course of action would be to treat those separately. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Yeah, I guess I've got one. If we're gonna treat it separately, I mean, we've already got work we did on them same streets that someone owes us money for, why wouldn't they be the ones responsible for fixing the others up?
So that, is it, is my, what you're saying is that we, the city have done work on?
We put the wearin' on, we put the wearin' on for them out there. That's what this money goes for, right? This other hundred thousand? That was part of the same project. I don't know why we'd be dealing with a different, dealing with an association now instead of a developer. When this was the same property we did that upgrade to.
There were, there, it's my understanding that there were two improvement projects to South Fork. One in two thousand seven. Yep, one was Water Main, and the other one was in two thousand thirteen.
Who did we do the improvement of the Water Main with?
The owners of the property at the time. So, many of the lots were owned still by South Fork Homes, but a few would have been owned by those private individuals. There were, there are a few lots that are owned privately there. About, I would say about half and half, is that?
I think the association took over halfway through that project, because we were plowing snow out there, and we were paid by Bigelow for a time. Then all of a sudden, we started getting paid by this association. And I think somehow they, they took over from an ITA.
Well, that seems to be the way you can do it with that association.
I know.
You have so many percentage, and you can kinda run from them.
I know. Can we, let me ask you this. If we're gonna treat this separately, can we at least ask that they take care of one before the second one goes anywhere?
It's my understanding that the assessments from the two thousand seven project have been completely paid, and we're just dealing with about half of the assessments from the two thousand thirteen project. Is that your understanding?
I'm actually so open as a county, what's unpaid there.
Okay.
Well, I think this assessment was a five-year deal, wasn't it? Aren't they on the last year? Four, four-year, okay. So it must've been four hundred thousand.
Sure.
And it's down to a hundred, we gave them the grace of fifty thousand for a year here, if we can get a little help on the INI.
Right. I know what they're looking at. You know, if they're gonna fix the INI, they're probably gonna have to dig into some streets to fix it.
I guess, and that's where I look at, I've been told, Charlie made the statement, that he's looked down a lot of them manholes.
I know, I've heard.
And the water coming in, there's a lot of them services broken, them services are the ones that haven't been hooked up to.
Right.
So, I mean, the same, same people still own them ones. If we could just get them fixed, then we'll deal with manhole when we get to it. But that water running in them services, when Brandon mentioned that his guys had a manhole cover off, they thought it was a surcharge line, you know, they thought it was a pump running out there. You know, there's serious water coming in somewhere. I mean, why are we putting all that through our sort of wastewater plant? All that clean water, you know, that's.
So, you know, I, I think what the city should do is send them notice that there are these issues. And so that we can figure out, you know, do we need to get Brandon out there to tell us what they need to do to fix the infiltration into the wastewater system that we're concerned about.
Can we create a hit list?
Right. Punch list.
Yeah, well, punch list. Call it what you want.
And then, you know, if we let them know what the issue is, we can figure out and what we need to do to fix it, and then, you know, send them subsequent notice. Here's the problem, here's what needs to be done to fix it, where our expectation is that you fix it. And if not, then the city is gonna come in and fix it and assess the properties again for it.
Well, yeah, that or it has to be that we're gonna have to put a flow meter on the, on the line, and there's gonna be a sewage charge by the gallon, just like the water's charged instead of what you're using for water, because we know there's way more sewage coming out of it than there's water being used.
Well, if it gets to the point that, if it gets to the point that they don't do anything about it, I mean, when they're fixing it and trying to assess it, where's our teeth behind that? What do we have behind that that?
I think you leave the assessment process, there are statutes that allow the city to go in and make those fixes and then.
Well, that's what I'm asking, do you have those statutes available that you can find? Because if this is, we're dealing with a private line, can we necessarily go in there, private property? I mean, that's the question that I wanna have. Before we go in there, and then also we turn around and say, well, we got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar bill here, and they're like, nah, we're not paying it, 'cause we don't have to.
Right.
And we don't wanna own it, right?
I, I, it, yes, there are those statutes, and I can get those for you.
Well, I don't necessarily want them, I want them, I just want you to be aware that this is something that.
Yep.
We need somebody backing us up here, and if we got state statutes to back us up, that we can do this, we wanna make them aware that this is the app that we're gonna take.
Exactly.
And, you know, stuff like that, I guess, we need some teeth.
Yep.
I think you can make the story sound big enough if you threaten it with a flow meter. I mean, that'd be serious money if you had to pay for that, but, you know. But, and then on the other hand, what Lonnie said about the punch list. The easy, cheap-to-fix stuff should be fixed right away, and, you know, I can't see that they're gonna buck that much.
Well, we want.
Because the ones that we can tell from a manhole that we're getting infiltration there, you know, the ones that they can dig up the service and do, I mean, they've got an excavator there all the time, they can base them.
Well, right now, there's no, there's no incentive for them to do it, because they're not getting charged anymore.
Yeah, yeah. We need a little leverage.
They would basically need to go in there and say, you need to start fixing it, or we're gonna, here's our, here's what we can fall back on, say we're gonna, these will be the charges coming to you. And we know Brandon's price is so.
So, that, that would actually be my recommendation, is to direct staff to go ahead and talk to the developer and, you know, advise them of these things. And by staff, it would probably be Brandon.
I know there were some conversations a year or so ago, and one of them had agreed to take a look at something, but I don't know if the list ever got, it didn't go, it didn't keep going. It needs to be started again, and the list given to them. I think they'll fix a lot of the cheap stuff. You know, and then that'll be a good start.
Yep, they know there's repercussions if they don't.
So if I could add a little bit, quote your point about a state statute, you have a city ordinance that requires, if there's any detrimental connections, INI infiltration of the San 3, so your ordinance states some issues with that, including a potential surcharge on connections that could be looked at, we have building permits that we could look at. Turn to hope some building permits, just 'cause we said we don't have a sewer that can serve anymore building permits. We have some different avenues to get that teeth that you're, you're speaking to, so.
Yeah, I guess that leverage still would work, that we break from that, that's okay.
So I think we have some avenues to go. I think Melanie spoke to, first step would be sit down and have the conversation, see what they feel about ultimately making some fixes out there, because it is a concern that we have, and we're building a very large wastewater plant upgrade due to the INI, to Doug's point, so.
Anything else, Melanie?
I think that that, we sort of meshed together number one and number two.
I was gonna say, both of them kinda got pushed together.
Yep.
Just to be clear, that is the direction from the council, moving forward, to have the initial discussion with the developer.
Yeah, I'm with consensus here, I think, yeah, we need to get them done with the, and kind of to reiterate to them that we've been, the city of Casson has been very, worked.
Spent three years.
Well, they've been working with them, it gives those lots moved, and over the years of changing things.
Yeah, built them all with the blackup, I mean, we've been more than fair.
We've went above and beyond.
Yeah.
Most of that was because of the residents living out there, is why we went above and beyond and saw that.
I get that, but still, they should know, right?
Yeah.
No, that's not a problem.
No, well, they're benefit from it.
Right.
But I mean, that was where we came, quick came to show on this. We had to do it, so.
Okay, so that took care of F1 and F2 and consent.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna back up. So, on F1, is it the council's desire to, to grant an extension to the existing assessment?
So I've been, and Nancy can speak to this more intelligently probably than I can. But, so they've paid roughly half of those two thousand thirteen assessments.
Well, they paid more than that, what they paid was half of what their balance was at the end of two thousand sixteen.
Okay, okay. And it's my understanding that it's not, this is not an unusual request necessarily, that other developers.
The council has been asking for it to extend deadlines, yes.
So we need a decision on that request for the extension.
My whole intention when we went through this before, that's why I brought this up, was to use that for a little bit of leverage, to, you know, use that for some cooperation, and I guess.
I'm recommending against that.
Just accept it.
What's that?
What, you're recommending what?
Against trying to use the other as leverage.
Because you already have authority that you can use for number two.
Two different situations, we can grant it or not, and then the other stuff that we wanna get done, the hit list, we have ordinances by that to call with. We can get that done, so.
Right, right. So then, so then we're to number one, is it, or is it not the council's desire to grant the extension of the assessment?
So how long is the extension that I'm asking for?
That was in your package.
I think I thought you wanted one year.
To the end of next year.
I don't have an issue with it, I guess.
So.
Entertain a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Can we have a motion in a second to grant the extension for the second half payment? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
So that's number one. Number two did not require a motion, we're just giving staff direction.
Well, if, if you are gonna authorize spending the money to do the engineering work, to move that project forward, then I would like a motion from the entire council to proceed with that engineering expense.
I thought we were gonna go to the table and first and talk to them.
Well, still, engineers have to go to the table.
Yeah, we just need to direct him to do that. To Donald Stump.
I won't charge the city for the meeting.
Holy cow. I'll make that motion.
Wait a second. You got enough going on in there.
Okay, okay.
Any further discussion?
We have a motion, second on the table, to direct Brandon to have an initial meeting with the stakeholders on South Fork regarding the punch list.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Brandon.
We put you to have some other work.
Initial meeting on.
Okay, that was F1 and F2. Gee, there's no new business. H, Mayor's report. Number one, we had that, the recap of the closed session from the last meeting. We came out of the closed session last time and went right into other business. There was no action taken during that closed session, we just directed the attorney to continue answers with that. Nothing there. Number two, the ICSC slash Buxton Conference. That was, I sent, had the, hopefully everybody got the email last week, I had Teresa forward that to everybody. It was, this conference was yesterday and Monday, and in that email, for some reason, I don't have it myself. I explained that I did not go to the conference, 'cause when we brought it up back forty-five days ago, or two months ago, when we first signed the contract, it was kind of a pipe dream that we'd be ready to go in sixty days, and we just, I didn't feel we had the information necessary to justify the expense, so we said no to the conference. Yeah, and, so it was, first of all, I didn't wanna waste my time going out there, taking days off, working a lot, it's probably gonna get me a thing. If I couldn't do anything for the city of Casson, why go out there? And two, I spend the money on the conference if there wasn't, if we weren't ready. There is a regional one in Chicago in September. I believe we'll have some more information by then to be able to possibly participate in that, and it'd be a lot less expensive conference as well. But just a little feedback, you know, we did get one company that did respond to us, and I can say, you know, now that they've given their answer, initially it's Taco Bell. So, if people out there, you know, if you go to the high school and ask the roomful of students what they'd like to see in Casson, and they did yesterday at the government class, it's unanimous, they wanna see a Taco Bell. Taco Bell said not now. But, but the good thing was, is the feedback that they provided, they told us exactly why. You know, one of the big ones was, they don't, we don't have enough identifiable generators for them to take the next step. So, that's good feedback to get, so now we're working on, the last seven, eight days, we've been working on identifying those generators, meaning what generates traffic in Casson? What brings people to town that are gonna be, bring people by their front door? So, it was good feedback, you know, they didn't say never, they just said at this time, we don't have enough identifiable generators, so now, part of our job over the next, you know, sixteen to ninety days is gonna be to get these generators identified, proven, and add that to our package that we're telling people about. So, kind of learn to speak their language, which Buxton's walking us through. Some of these folks are pretty quirky, when you talk to them, what they're looking for in a community, where they wanna go, so we need to be able to speak their language. So we're working on it, things are going forward. Rebecca will be here, starting, I think, two weeks?
She started this week, actually, yeah, she started this week.
So she'll be a big help in that, 'cause the Buxton information that they're, that you can put together to do is overwhelming. So there's, there's no way for me to have enough time today, we really need somebody dedicated to that, so. So that's, that's left out, did not go to the conference, we saved the money on that. Onto I, Administrator's Report.
So, I'll start with People's Energy Cooperative. We do have an agreement with People's Energy Cooperative that was executed in two thousand twelve, I believe. I read paragraph, I think it's four point one, to say that we could agree on additional service territory. The representative from People's Energy Cooperative reads the agreement to say that we are at a standstill and that Casson will not request any additional service territory. Therefore, we will not be providing electric service to the new last subdivision, which is not within our current territory. This agreement does talk about the ability to provide People's Energy Cooperative with thirty-six months' notice, that we wish to change that standstill provision. So, that could be a conversation that we have at your next meeting, if you wanna have a more in-depth conversation about what that would mean. That's also a conversation that maybe we'll be about to have after we do have our rate study conversation, because then we can talk about what does it mean and what is the advantage of having more service territory? And then we could also invite Steve Downer from NNUA to come to a council meeting and talk about why it is that it's advantageous for cities to be able to serve all of the customers within their boundary, essentially. So, there are some ways to move forward with that. If you wanna move forward immediately, if you wanna wait until maybe after our rate study, we can talk about it more on June sixth.
Okay, any questions, comments for Teresa?
I just have one question, and it's because I'm new here.
Okay.
And the eighteen term of agreement, it's for twenty-five years, what happens after twenty-five years? We have to renegotiate this and pay for it again?
Well, after twenty-five years, they would pretty much see where they're at. I mean, it could be that, you know, twenty-five years down the road, that it's not advantageous for them, maybe to serve the area too, so it would just be a point at which we would renegotiate. I don't believe that we would repurchase any of the territory that we have already settled upon.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, how about we take a look at this at the rate study? Have the rate study, see where that's at, and then we can direct, we're gonna, we need some information on electric territory in general.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, we had all of them that were mentioned in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, Ben and Delport.
Yeah, add that to the next agenda for the 14th of June. We'll, we'll circle back to this at the next council meeting after the rate, the rate study's on the 6.
Yes, okay. Okay, 2017 Street Assessment Project deferrals. We did receive four requests for deferrals. Um, all four requests were from folks who qualify for deferment under statute, the 429 statute. So, there was no reason for me to give approval or for me to bring them to you for approval. They already qualify under the statute of, or for, um, for deferrals. Um, and then the exception agreement with Excel Energy. There were 13 properties that had been identified as properties served by Excel within Cassin's territory. One of those properties is no longer a service location and, um, we have initiated a request to Excel Energy to take over service of those 12, uh, customers who are within our territory that were previously served by Excel. Um, and then, once we get that ironed out, then we're gonna take a look at, um, where our territory maybe should be, who we should be serving, and then we can start negotiating with Excel perhaps to increase some of the territory that we serve in northeast, northwest part of Cassin.
Any questions on that?
Well, south, do we, is the trailer court served by us or?
No.
No, that's all.
That was at one time though, wasn't it?
A portion, well, a portion of it was in our territory. So, this has all been a very long, drawn-out, uh, territory negotiation. So, evidently, the maps that the territories were, um, drawn on were small in scale, so that the pencil line actually was wide in actual feet or miles that it represented. And then, um, blowing up those territory maps and making determinations about who would serve which areas was quite a long, drawn-out process. And we're just wrapping that up by taking back service of our own wastewater treatment facility. Um, the update to that map will happen this week. Uh, the request goes to MTC this week. And then we should have an accurate map that represents what our territory is per all of the agreements that I have on file currently in my office. Then we can build from there.
And that's been years and years of doing this.
Jay, engineers' report.
I'm the mayor and council. Uh, in your council packet is the first two items associated to South Manorville Avenue Improvement Project, uh, the first one being the project's schedule. Uh, tonight, we have for your consideration, passing a resolution calling a public hearing. Uh, that is for the special, to start the special assessment process. Uh, that is for the one property that we do not have a agreement with, um, associated with that project. Uh, last meeting, we discussed about getting some direction and the schedule for this project, so that's why it's here for you tonight. Um, so that's gonna start the, the special assessment process. If we call the public hearing tonight, uh, we, we will be back at the June 14th meeting, to have the public hearing on the improvements. We'll order in the improvements and then we'll authorize myself and staff to go up for bids for that project on June 14th. Uh, July 12th, we will have the bids back and we will be considering entering into a contract with a contractor and begin June 12th. Uh, at that time, we'll also continue the public hearing process, scheduled currently for August 9th, to have the final assessment hearing on August 9th. And then, uh, we would look at starting construction also in early August with completion this fall. Uh, so it's a schedule, again, this is just for the one property on the west side of the road that we don't have a petition waiver agreement with. Uh, we still are in negotiation, the discussion with that property owner, um, associated with the, the cost of that assessment. Uh, that's the, the schedule we laid out here for you. One item of note, uh, we just went through the special assessment process with the homeowners in the third, fourth, and fifth project. Uh, one thing of note, we are proposing to award the contract before we have the final assessment hearing. Do you remember the reason why? We typically do that on like a street drive is to, to gauge our risk. Uh, if all the homeowners do contest their assessments amount, we would know that the final assessments, we, we sometimes delay the award. I have not done that with this schedule here. Reason being is we already know our risk. Uh, we talked about it's one property, so we, we potentially have that risk there. So, that's why I've tweaked the schedule there to give us more time to get this, this product out for bid and start construction there. Uh, so that's the project's schedule. Any questions on that? Uh, the next item would be to consider the resolution to call the hearing on the improvements. So, now I jump to that item. Uh, so again, the second item is a resolution call on the public hearing. Again, that's due for June 14th, and it would just be for the one parcel that there's not a petition waiver agreement with. Uh, so if you pass that resolution, there is a notice of public hearing on improvements. Uh, it's in the council packet, there attachment to the resolution. Uh, that would be the notice that would go to the paper and be sent to the, to the property owner. So, I have to answer any questions you have.
Any questions on that for Brandon? That's June 14th.
Uh, just at the city council meeting here, so it'd just be.
So, it'll be public hearing that we'll have at the city council. I'm not planning on switching the venues or anything. All right. All right, so no questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution calling for the public hearing on South Manorville Improvement Project.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ronnie. One second.
I'll second that.
Next, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Resolution passes.
All right, thank you. Like I said, we're still negotiating that property owner to come to resolution and potential agreement for the project. Now, so moving on to the third item there, uh, project updates. Let's give a quick project update from some of the projects. Uh, the crack filling project, you may know, notice all the toilet paper out in town. Uh, that's wrapping up here in the next couple of days, so it'll be completed with that. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, that's, uh, on budget and on schedule. I don't know if you've been out there, but we got a pretty impressive concrete pour of the floor for the new tank's been poured. That's a 200-foot diameter, uh, floor to the, the new tank. And we're now casting the 20-foot tall walls that are gonna be tipped up and, uh, ultimately to build the, the big utilization base and big tank that we're gonna have to take the flows when we have large flows through the high and I talked about earlier in the meeting, so.
How many gallons is that then?
Uh, 4.3 or 3.4, I can't remember. Million gallons, so, pretty sizable, big tank out there, so.
That'll help a lot if we flow down some of that clear water.
And that, that still is in the long-term wastewater treatment plan, is to, we still need to address our high and I and, and get that reduced, so. Uh, so we still need a bonding bill to pass. Uh, our funding is, we have some temporary funding in place. We still need that bonding bill to pass, and we still need to stay here. We heard that they had come to a resolution, but maybe not, so we're not sure kind of the flux where it's at. We still need that bonding bill to secure our long-term funding for that project. Uh, so moving on to the Gasol 21 or the Dump Road. Uh, the county's planning on reconstructing that project starting on June 19th. That project's planned for 50 working days. Uh, they don't have really completion dates, more of a working days. Uh, so that's gonna be from Fifth Street, which is the main east-west road fare there. Fifth Street, uh, all the way to the city of Manorville, the county road there coming in by the dam. Uh, that's gonna be replacing the tuminous paving, put concrete paving in. And then we have a city waterman that we're gonna replace as part of that project. So, again, that's starting on June 19th, and that road will be closed to traffic. Uh, with the concrete pour, obviously, concrete takes some time to set up, so we're gonna kind of close the side streets, uh, let them go the other way away from the county road and work with a couple, there's a, a couple churches there, uh, one church and one little cul-de-sac there. So, we're gonna work with, uh, work with them on getting them access throughout the project. But generally, the other, through traffic should be finding other routes. So, heads up on that again, June 19th. Uh, the third, fourth, and fifth project, the 2017 Street Assessment Project, that project has started. Uh, I mean, you've noticed that, so obviously a sizable project, so that's started. Um, everybody, the staff and council should have received an email from Tyler Baumback. Uh, that was an email that goes to all the homeowners every week, and we got a big homeowner list, so if you have any other homeowners that didn't get that email, uh, send them our, their email. We'll add them to the list. Uh, we're planning on keeping you guys copied throughout the project. Just giving you the weekly updates, the same thing with the homeowners are hearing. And then every Tuesday at 9:00 and 5:30, uh, every week, we're having a homeowners meeting at the water tower, at the old water tower there. If anybody's, any homeowners are interested in just talking to Tyler, questions, comments, concerns, uh, Kyle's gonna keep the homeowners abreast of the project in addition to the emails. So, again, this Tuesday is at 9:00 AM and 5:30 PM. Um, and then the last thing, we just added to the, added the agenda was parking on the third, fourth, and fifth project. And we had the homeowners kickoff meeting. There were some concerns about parking and, and, uh, we told them, we'll go to the side streets. And they said, well, what about our RVs and, and boats? You know, I use it every weekend. They ended up to drag it back to the project site. I think Doug and Dan were there and we, we talked to them. I said, we're in town, can we park those? And they said, we don't really have a good spot for it. So, what I told the homeowners, I would go back to you as the council and consider, uh, what I'm kind of recommending as a, as a temporary solution to the problem to allow RVs, um, and boats, et cetera, to be parked in the side streets throughout the project. Uh, so that's what is before you tonight. That's something that the council's interested in allowing that, basically directing staff and the police department to enforce the parking regulations on the, the blocks adjacent to the construction project. So, that's what my thoughts, uh, is to how to best accommodate that parking, so.
So, I'd rather have my RV parked close to my home rather than somewhere else.
Yep. No issues.
So, I.
Yeah, if you would make a motion, then it will be on the record.
Just getting ready for.
I'll make a motion that we allow them to park their RVs and et cetera on the side streets during the project.
Okay. One second.
Second.
Thanks, Doug. I have a motion in a second to allow parking of RVs, boats, et cetera during the construction project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side?
All right, that's all I had, and we'll convey that to the homeowners, let them know.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask Brandon a question?
Sure.
Now, on Fifth Street, uh, it'd be in the 400 block. Is that just gonna be a mill over later, isn't it, the street there?
Yes, I believe so. There may be a waterman too that we might have to replace the full pavement for like the north half of the road, I believe.
Not on the street now, I'm talking, east and west. I was just wondering, there's four trees there with all red marks on them. I, I, it was gonna be.
Is that along the wellhouse?
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, so Ronnie directed us, uh, to remove those trees, and they're in pretty rough shape. So, it was, uh, more of a condition as opposed to the construction affecting those trees.
And then my question was, I just noticed them four because they're right there on the big tree. And I was just wondering if there's more of them on the streets that maybe you could take a look at, you know, I don't.
So, we've had some homeowners approach to say, you know, we're not, you know, we're not on the side street, that the wheel isn't scheduled for removal, you know, it's in rough shape, come look at it. Ronnie's met with the phenomenal homeowners and looked at those trees, um, each individual tree individually, and we've added some trees for removal.
Added some, okay.
Based on condition and homeowners.
I just, I just hoped there was a reason that some of them were coming off because, uh, you know, we, we're losing enough trees.
For sure.
The roads aren't even gonna get disturbed.
So, again, it was a condition of the tree, and then we're still planning the, the tree replacement program. Ronnie's working on that, planning on having a ho, open meeting, uh, with the homeowners this winter sometime to look at the planning plan and, and bring it back, uh, to the council for approval, so. We're definitely scheduling some trees to come back in there, so. Takes time.
I guess there's a reason, but.
Any other questions for Brandon before we move on? That's your report. Thanks, Brandon, appreciate it. Okay, personnel, uh, request for special leave. It's in the packet at the library. Any questions on that?
Special leave request, um, do need to be approved by the city council. Um, so this request had already gone before the library board for approval, and I do, because the way the personnel policy is worded, need approval from the council as well.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries. Number two, admin assistant position.
Yes, so we have had, um, Deb with us while the new utility building special is just untrained, but we lose Deb on Friday. Um, that will be her last day with us. So, then we will be short person at City Hall. Um, there has been some discussion in the past about how to fill the position, including perhaps going with, um, an organization like Manpower in order to, um, to fill our need to have a front desk, front counter, first phone, kind of a position that would handle a lot of what comes in through the front door, comes in as a phone call. So, um, I would like permission to, um, contact Manpower and get a proposal from them regarding filling that position.
And how many hours will we create up to 40?
Um, well, we could certainly use 40, um, except for summer hours. So, we closed early on Friday, so we could go with 36, um, during the summer, and then it's 40.
Any questions? Do you have kind of a rough job description for it?
Yes, well, I had included in the packet quite a ways back, and I can bring that. If you approve, um, getting a quote for the position, I will come back and I'll bring you back the list of things that I had created for a previous agenda regarding what that position would do. I can't just off the top of my head remember what meeting that was.
Well, if you want to consider, get the job description together, what you're looking for exactly, and then get bid from Manpower or whatever.
Oh, okay.
And bring that back to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then we can have a further discussion of details.
All right.
Yeah, well, we kind of went over this quite some time ago about the position, and there was, uh, statements made that whether we really needed the position.
No, I agree. I mean, it was basically put out there that, uh, the person that had the position before really didn't have enough to do to keep herself busy as it was. So, I mean, that's a part of it. I'd like to see, see exactly where we're lacking help.
And I did have that in a previous packet, so I can bring that back to you.
That's where you're gonna bring back with the job description.
Yes, yes. I had actually enumerated the tasks that needed to be done in a kind of time frame to each of the tasks, so I can bring that back.
Also, if what tasks, I guess, are getting not done, I mean, I don't want to create a position, fill a position just because, I mean, if we're falling behind, I understand that, but to fill in another desk that we have, I'd rather do the desk. I just want to make one comment. We also have to trust in the people who are running those departments to tell us, hey, I need more help. Um, I really don't think it's our job to judge if they need help or if they don't need help. That's what we're paying them for. I just want to say that.
I think we'd be pretty premium wages and, and that management will manage help from you, I think, if I do.
Yes, but they should be able to tell us when they need help.
This was a position that was, was put in, and we were told later that it wasn't really needed. By the person that left it.
Bring back some information, Teresa.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, uh, several parts. Number three, A resignation from Juan Machaca from the fire department. You have that in your packet. It's letter, like, thank Juan for serving the city and on the department for years he's been on there, so, uh, see Juan, tell him thank you for his, appreciate, appreciate his service. So, Juan's moving on. And then B, training officer position. Okay, is this something we need action on, or is this just in forecast?
Consider the promotion within the city department, then a motion to go ahead and, um, confirm that appointment would be appropriate.
On, on, uh, on number, or letter A, we have to do a resolution, or, uh, vote on that too to.
Accept a resignation? Oh, let's go back to A then.
I didn't know we were trying to run them all together. That's why I told you after that minute. I was just gonna wait.
We can buy it through them all separately only.
Doing the mall sufferers would be very clean.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Juan Machaca from the fire department.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? And then to B, courtesy. And then to B, Curtis Alexander Training Officer Position, promotion to Training Officer. You have a letter there from the chief and from Chris.
Motion?
Motion, do you have a second?
I'll.
I have a motion in a second to accept the promotion to Training Officer. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. On to C. People leave over the last year, so we got new candidates there. Recommendation for new staff members, candidates. Like to thank all the candidates for wanting to serve the community and going through what they have to go through to be on there and probably doing a pretty thankless job for the next however many years they're with us. So I'll entertain a motion on letter C, new probationary candidates.
Yep, yep. Is this all the candidates that applied, or?
No, we, there was like ten or twelve that came to the open house. Then we offered up the physical and the written test. We interviewed eight and we're asking for seven. Nope, that's good, we'll apply. Any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the probationary candidates.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Thank you. Number four, liquor store position.
The liquor store manager is in need of some additional staff. She would like to hire a twenty hour a week position, which would make the person eligible for sick leave. And we can work with our liquor committee to get that position posted, vet the application, send you the interviews, and then bring a recommendation back to council for that as well.
And just to note that this isn't an add, there's been some turnover.
Exactly, because she needs help.
This is, they're shorthanded right now because they had some turnover.
Yeah, it just didn't say on the employee list, it doesn't say if they're part-time or what, there's like seven.
Right.
Is that about right?
Yeah, there's seven employees, or maybe there isn't if there's been turnover. Yeah, that was. Turnover in the last two weeks.
Yes.
So that list probably is something, but turnover means left. Yep, somebody's no longer with me.
Yeah, I guess what that means, do we always see that one, or do I want someone there?
Usually because they are so part-time, they don't come before the council.
Right, and the liquor store manager talked to me and she said since it was twenty hours, she wanted to ask the council before.
It's a more substantial position. I mean, some folks fill in maybe two shifts and get sixteen hours, or, you know, two four-hour shifts and get eight hours a week, or just one day a week and eight hours, but.
And she hasn't had the best luck, from my understanding, was, asked me about it, was that to get somebody for four hours, six hours, she hasn't been to find anybody who's willing to consistently show up. Yeah, so to make the twenty hour position, you might be able to find somebody that would actually treat it as a job, so.
Yeah, I guess that was the only thing I, I've seen them, all the clerks there, and then you've got a senior clerk or something like that, there was too, but.
Yep.
Yep.
Just the one senior clerk, huh?
Yep, so that would be the only other full-time position in addition to the manager would be the senior clerk.
But how many do we have that have, that get sick timed, that they get one thing?
Well, this would be the only additional one besides the manager.
And the senior clerk.
None of the other ones get sick timed.
This would be a benefited position again, that's why I brought it to the council.
And the person who left was a not.
A part-time clerk, it was not a benefited position.
And with the expanded Sunday hours and that position leaving. And if you bring in a twenty hour, you know, I can't speak to the liquor store manager, but just for the conversation, if you brought somebody in who could work twenty hours, we can commence to that. Maybe somebody there folks that are getting six, eight hours might only get four or six hours instead. So it's not adding any time, there'll be no more people working shifts, it's just gonna be somebody you can count on.
You'd get something on what it costs, it'd be the same wage that the clerks are getting, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The only thing extra is, what do you acquire, a day in, well, half a day of pay period probably?
Yes.
A full pay period, this is half a time, so you're looking at a day a month?
A one point six hours pay period.
One point six?
Oh, right, well, and a few more.
So you're not even a, not a major.
No. Interesting. No, yeah, by the way, would you start adding benefits?
Yep, I hear you.
I'll entertain a motion on liquor store twenty hour a week position.
I'll make that motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I pull the same sign. Motion carries. On to L, attorney's report.
In your packet was an updated leave donation policy. I made some of the revisions that we talked about at the last meeting. We changed it to include, instead of donations being given to, directly to other employees, it's gonna go into a shared bank. So that the hours and the, the leave can be prorated based upon what those individuals who are donating it make versus the individuals to whom they are donating it make. So essentially, if a, if a employee who earns more is doing the donating, they can get more bang for their buck out of what they're donating to. If the employees who are receiving that earn less, they would be, you know, it would be more than the eight hours. I added an exclusion in paragraph four that full-time employees can receive donated time, part-time employees can. But probationary employees are not going to be eligible for receiving donated time. I included some language in there such that if the individual who's receiving the donated hours is receiving any other kind of paid disability benefit from any source, regardless of what it is, they won't be paid more than one hundred percent of what their salary would be. I added some language in there that once the time is donated, it's not refundable essentially. Once you've donated that time, you don't, you can't get that back. Some explanation about tax implications. There are no tax implications to the employee who's donating time, but donated hours are taxable to the employee who would be receiving those. So just that, just to make that real clear. And then I added some language about if the individual, if there's an individual who would like to receive donated leave, they can ask the city administrator to send out a request for that. And if they want to include medical information, then they have to do that in writing to the city administrator, so she can legally release that information. So that was the gist of the changes that I made. Anyone have any questions about it, or?
No.
Just on, in other words, you don't want them drawing more money than what they'd be working.
Correct.
And that'd be on insurance, anything city paid, right? If a person were to have Aflac on their own, that would be.
Well, with the way that we've got it worded, it would include Aflac. So if they've got Aflac, it's a, it's a personal insurance policy, line three, paragraph five there, in parentheses, it says including an employer's sponsor or personal insurance policy. So if they're getting Aflac, that would reduce what they would be eligible to receive from the city. So essentially, if you get hurt, you don't get a windfall. You can be made whole, but you don't get to benefit from, is the thought, we could change that, but.
You could potentially help yourself with this, this way, you know, if you're maxed out on your time and banking, you could end up being the guy that needed something. When it's a bank that everyone puts in, you actually could be helping yourself. I think it's set up good.
It addressed all the things we had before that you need to change, but nothing changed for that.
So if you're comfortable with that, I would, do they need a motion?
Motion, yeah, accept the approval of the policy.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Doug, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. L two, administrator performance evaluation slash contract.
And this was just a follow-up. We had gone through Teresa's performance evaluations at the last meeting, and some of you folks wanted to take a look at her contract, so I did provide that to you for your review. That was not impacted, that was.
It was provided.
It was provided.
Any questions, comments?
I see she's overdue for a raise.
The contract does state that salary will be reconsidered, so it's a two-year contract from November of fifteen to November of twenty seventeen. But it does state that.
Annual.
Salary would be considered as a first year.
I'd like to clear one statement that was made at the last meeting. The ball wasn't really dropped, most of us still own the evaluation when they're handed out.
Correct.
It just never came around.
Yep, it got bumped from, well, it's my understanding it got bumped from some agendas because there was so much going on at the end of last year, right? That November was our public hearing on the assessment projects for third, fourth, and fifth. And there were some personnel things going on at that time, if you recall. So I did receive a number of evaluations back in twenty sixteen, at the end of twenty sixteen, but it, you're right, it just did not get on the agenda again until, I think it was put on there and maybe stricken a couple of times.
So there is no real, it doesn't state a specific pay scale?
Correct.
So what is her next move, if she is to get a move?
It would be at the discretion of the council.
I would recommend that everything be on the pay scale, since we have one, and the city administrator is on it, even if it's on the contract, but it certainly is a company's discretion.
But she is, you're basing her pay on a certain position?
A certain grade, yes.
And what is that?
Twenty, the top grade.
Twenty?
And she has some steps to go.
She's at step?
I'm not sure what she's right on.
It would be step one, it is step one.
Okay.
I can verify, but it's step one.
And then, and part of that too, managers, part of our pay equity too, right, the steps and.
Yeah, you know, we, I talked with somebody once who were about union, non-union. I know in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when they created one pay scale, they made sure everybody stayed on it. Whether they were union or not, even, just for those pay equity issues and whatnot, so, yep.
Everyone got a cost of living raised, didn't they, at the turn of the year? Because the base salary was ninety-five something.
Yes, I just forgot.
In the paper, it said you're getting a hundred thousand, seven thirty-four, or is that your mileage and stuff added in that, was in the paper?
That might have been after the cost of living, after her sources.
I think that number. I make that cost of living that everybody else got, correct? So, but she hasn't gotten a raise in her step like everybody else gets.
Yeah, well, most people have to have a passing review to get the raise, and that too.
I would say this is a passing review from what I see, out of the marks of the comment, in my eye.
It's not a failing grade.
No, it's more exceeding it more than not.
I'd make a motion that she be moved to step two, grade twenty, right?
Yep, effective.
Effective November.
November.
Second, yep, effective November twenty-second, twenty sixteen.
I'll second that.
Or retroactive.
Yeah?
Yes.
Just like any of them.
Everybody else.
No, I didn't know actually, Dan, if you're moving forward or back, we're right in the middle, so thank you for clarification.
Any further discussion?
Three point two percent.
Do you have anything?
I think she's done, any done?
What? Nope, I'm good.
The evaluations that we got, the summary sheet that we had, it was meeting expectations, so I don't think it was a failing evaluation.
No.
There were some things that needed improvement, and we talked about that last meeting and the conversations with Teresa. Since then, we'll have something to judge that on going forward, so.
I think we could all use improvement.
Absolutely.
From one time to another.
And that's, you know, one of the reasons that you, you do continuous education and improvement. For some of these conferences, if we send our staff to our vacations, they're actually bettering themselves for the city of Caston to learn more and hopefully save us some money and learn some different things. So I think, you know, that's something we should encourage, so. Any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion on the floor in a second to go from.
Step three?
I get my grades and steps.
I made the motion. Yes.
I made the motion.
Grade twenty, going from grade twenty, step one, to grade twenty, step two, retroactive to November second, two thousand and sixteen.
Twenty-second, isn't it?
No.
Second?
November second.
I'm sorry.
Higher date. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign.
Aye.
Okay, two.
Mayor, respectfully, we did have a late card come in, and the city attorney has agreed to address any of the security expressives by the individual who requested an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
And that would be Aileen Dubble.
Doubles.
Doubles.
I have to tell you, I'm all staff, so I miss, am I supposed to stand up?
Yes, you can come to the podium if you have something to say.
I'll just tell you what I wrote?
Yes, so Aileen's address is two oh five Fifth Avenue Northwest.
Right, I just had some concern about that. I realize this isn't the open part of the meeting, so maybe it's not appropriate, do this.
Well, we have, we have made an opportunity available for you at that time.
I sent it to some people, but it didn't get to all of it, everyone, and it's regarding the assessments to the homeowners on Fifth Avenue. My husband and I own a home on Fifth Avenue Northwest. We were told our home is one unit for the ongoing on-street assessment. That's cost of seven thousand forty-six dollars. We weren't happy, of course, when they came out, but we realized that street and services need upkeep and plans on paying the assessment. A couple of actions by the city council have changed our minds, and we're appealing the assessment. On the April thirteenth public hearing, the old elevancy school's assessment of five units was voted a decrease of two point five units at the request of Councilwoman Borgstrom, without much explanation, it sets a precedent without any explanation except preferential treatment because Craig's mother is part owner of the property. except preferential treatment because Queens mother is part owner of the property. Unless there's something obvious that I'm missing. This is an obvious inequality. We have filed an objection to our assessment because we didn't get a corresponding fifty percent decrease, which we consider would be fair and equitable, method of cost sharing among the properties as previously described by other city personnel. Number two, state law dictates that cities can charge assessments to fund public improvements, such as replacing street lights and patching up streets, but only if the property owners who are assessed get a special benefit from the improvement program. According to Minnesota statute, chapter four-two-nine, no matter what method the city uses to establish the amount of the assessment, footies versus units, the real measure of the benefit is the increase in the market value of the property because of the improvements. That benefit measured by how much the property value increases must be equal or greater than the assessment. As far as I know, the services of a qualified licensed appraiser were not used. If not the key test of the assessment, that is based on an investment that increases the value of the property is unmet. Anyone residing in Cassin receives the benefit from the street work on Fifth Avenue. Two examples are the emergency vehicles that use Fifth Avenue to get to Prairie Meadows, and Fifth Avenue is historically on the parade route for Cassin Festival in the Park. Assessments are being used more and more by cities to gather money from residents without appearing to increase taxes. In August 2016, the Minnesota Supreme Court ruled in a lawsuit against the city of St. Paul that assessments are actually a tax. Rochester and Duluth residents have also challenged assessments against their properties. Residents who can't afford, this is point number four, residents who can't afford to pay their assessment outright can finance it, but are charged an interest rate. Does this interest rate include an add-on finance charge? This was not made clear. That's all I have for questions, and apparently you respond in correspondence.
Well, we appreciate your comments. Is, do you have a specific question that you want addressed?
My specific question is, we've filed for.
An objection.
An objection.
Correct.
And we're waiting to hear from that, and I did have input into the other meeting, and I just wanted to put it on record.
Well, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much. Onto M, correspondence. Any questions on the correspondence? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Ronnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody, appreciate it.